So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the City Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Would Clerk, please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Mrs. Gross,
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. But first, I want to comment on Dr. Ronald Miller because he may have some very good points. My Facebook friend posted her voting record. She did not vote for the midterm, yet it shows that she had. Her presidential vote was deleted. So, he probably has some very good points that he's making. Now, first, do no harm. It is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose, the property owners of Bon Air, do so at their own peril. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham have all pledged to help Bon Air get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people. A beautiful, calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and birds. Will the rest of City Council promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air neighborhood? We, the property owners, say no to anything other than a green space to replace the once valuable asset of the school that was closed against our will. Reaffortement is thoroughly rejected by we, the people of Bon Air. There is no benefit to us. There is only harm. The answer is no. The Michael Mullen Green Space is a partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Millie Sasse.
Here I am. If I could only find my file here, excuse me. Here we are. My name is Millie Sasse. I've been a resident of Oak Cliff for more than 40 years. Thank you for permitting me to speak in opposition of ordinance 2021-1906, and please send this legislation back to the starting gate. I do hope you're listening to my pleas about 1906. Defeat of this legislation is critical to the survival of my residential neighborhood. Changing OPRD to UCMU will permit high, wide, bright, intrusive buildings with accompanying traffic as well as additional permitted uses to Oak Cliff. The zoning region borders Oak Cliff. Right now, we get some protection because of residential compatibility in OPRD. However, if UCMU is accepted as presented, Oak Cliff is doomed, and our neighborhood efforts over the past decades have been for naught. Walnut Capital was permitted to meet privately with some from council and also with some from Mayor Ganey's office. I'll bet Walnut Capital was not limited to three minutes during those sessions. There was probably back-and-forth discussions, questions, and answers. Why don't residents of Oakland deserve the same courtesy? Since it looks like we will never get that opportunity, I ask you to reject, defeat, bury, crush, whatever you can do to stop 2021-1906. I should clarify a bit. Some Oak Cliff did have a meeting with a council office. We were shown version two of 1906, which had resulted from a meeting between the council office and Walnut Capital. We were told that no substantive changes could now be made to 1906. What happened? It looks like that may not have been true, and we should fight for our neighborhood even harder. So, here I am pleading to you. One last note. UCMU has built two lies where buildings must be built out to. There may be some exceptions, but in fact, there will be long, tall buildings all along the Boulevard of the Allies. This is wrong. Even in the previous plan for Oakland, there were plans to return that highway to a true boulevard with plantings and trees, having tall, long buildings permitted along the Boulevard of the Allies is exactly the opposite of that plan. And since whatever is in 2021-1906 with its version of UCMU will be by default, will be part of the Oakland plan. These tall, long, close-to-the-highway buildings will be along whatever we thought was once a boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Elena Zatsoff.
Good morning. I'm Elena Zatsoff. I've lived in South Oakland for 42 years. I am here today to talk about ordinance 2021-1906, the Walnut Capital rezoning of part of Oakland. I have concerns over some of the boundaries. Let's start with Halgett Street. The only justification we were given by city planners for supporting its rezoning is that the owners wanted it. Of course they do, because Walnut Capital is going to exorbitantly overpay them for their houses, and the developer wants it rezoned. Spot zoning, as defined by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, is a singling out of one lot or small area for different treatment from that accorded to similar surrounding land from which it is indistinguishable, innate in character, for the economic benefit or detriment of the property owners. Thus, Halgett Street is spot zoning. Pennsylvania courts have ruled that spot zoning is unconstitutional. Those 20 houses are not derelict and provide much-needed student housing. Moving to Zalima Park. Part of Zalima Park is included on the map to be changed to UCMU. When I pointed this out to Deputy Director Dash, he said he would include it in his recommendations to the planning commission. When I inquired as to why he failed to do so, he said it's something I can point out at the public hearing. It's very frustrating that I had to uncover it. I was told I was wrong, then it was acknowledged I was right, and something would be done, then nothing was done, and it's left to me to convince you that this is a serious issue. There's some future purpose. Why Walnut Capital wants it rezoned. All of Zalima Park should be zoned park. Rites of way should not be rezoned, especially the one between the Isley's Building and the Duquesne White Substation, which is needed for safety. How many other right-of-way's are being rezoned? These are among many details, which are very important and require time to review with diligence. Hybrid in-person virtual town hall meetings where true exchange can occur need to happen regarding 2021-1906. The additional section drawings requested by a planning commission for you can be made into larger displays there. Three minutes provided to citizens without any answers is not adequate. Questions don't get answered, nothing gets explained, there's no back and forth. Now that it has been given back to you, please plan a series of town hall meetings on this. The one required public hearing is not adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone with us in chambers, please come forward at this time. You will also be given three minutes and state your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District of Acapulco, where I was. I want to address my three minutes to our mayor, Mayor Ganey. Yesterday, the meeting didn't start till 10:29, and at 10 o'clock, they're supposed to scrap it if they don't start. I went to the mayor, and I said, "Mayor Ganey, I want to apologize for the wait." We have to sit and wait on him. I said, "This is done quite regularly." So, I go and I sit back down. Well, the mayor goes with the proclamations and so on. Then he leaves. I'm telling you, Mayor Ganey, you're just as bad as Paduod. You would not stay and listen to us when you came into the meeting. This is City Hall. This is for the people. Do you understand? I want you to understand something about me. You may think I'm ninnpicking. I went to Penn Hills High School, and I can remember we had a teacher, history. I loved history. I remember him saying that you're here in the United States. You can be what you want to be. He says, "In the communist countries, if you got the IQ to be a doctor, you must be a doctor. But remember, here in the United States, you can be what you want to be." No, not here. If you're black or brown. Do you understand? They wouldn't let Esther Bush continue speaking, but yet they let Tim Stevens. Now, Tim Stevens is a very fair-skinned, looked almost white man. When they had him talking about the police, he made sure, "I have mixed children." I became upset, because I'm looking, "Why are you telling these policemen that you got mixed, like-complexed children?" My son was dark, and he's dead, and I believe because of the color of his skin. I want you to understand. When I come down here and I talk about my son, who five white cops walked out while he's on the floor with his head bleeding, saying if he could only breathe, crying, saying, "Man, I can't breathe." Man, he was begging. Like I said, he was calling them five white dogs. And I call them dogs because they walked out on a man begging for his life, and all they had to do was push a button. So, when they come back 45 minutes, and they had called the paramedics, when the paramedics came, the police stopped him and said he's dead. And he didn't write down what they said, that the paramedics had sizzed upon working on my son. My son was dying, and they tried to stop him. If it hadn't been for the paramedics, he still died. He was in, he wrote the EBA out here fast from a meeting in the Hill at 9 o'clock. So, let's say that 10 something, my son is dead. My son is dead from walking into a house where his girlfriend lives. And all he said was, "Man, I live here." Turned his head, he knocked my son out. With the blood, the one policeman writes down, he had an issue of blood and would not call the doctor.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers wishing to speak? Please come forward.
There are none.
Seeing none, that moves us to our Standing Committee agenda. The first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Madam Clerk, can we read 308 and 309 together? They both need held for executive session.
Absolutely. Bill 308, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in Favor of Julie and Kirby Christie. In the amount of $50,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill number 309, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with CSI Corporate Security and Investigations LLC for investigative services relating to the Fern Hollow Bridge Incident for an amount not to exceed $17,500.
Motion to hold both bills for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills will be held for executive session. That moves to our invoice and to approve the invoices.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, so we had a, I guess it's a, would it be a request from the Budget Office to waive the rules, since under EMS, there's above $5,000? We have Bill Urbana here, if
So, Madam Clerk, forgive me. Refresh me. What's the rule we're waiving?
I don't know.
It's the waiver of the rule if you and I accept what we just waived with the rule. You know, just, you want to explain what the charge is?
Up to five.
Yeah, Bill.
If you want a better explanation, it would be best to have EMS here or our Public Safety Director. But this is the second year that we've had this particular charge, and it's sort of a, my understanding of the, what's it called again? The Point?
Pulse Point Foundation.
Pulse Point Foundation is to assist the coordination of EMS efforts. So, when there's emergency calls, it helps coordinate and then track, you know, what we're doing with these calls. It's a joint collaboration, I believe, with the county and with UPMC. There's different ways that you could, I guess we could enter an agreement with these folks. It's a much more lengthy and less efficient way to be able to do this. Doing it through an invoice would be the most efficient way to do it. So, there is a request, and should be a request, to waive the rules for this particular payment. It more falls under the membership kind of thing. If we don't do this, and we drag it out too long, we may lose the service and $12,000.
I'm happy to assist EMS. And Councilman?
Yeah, I would just, I just saw that it was above five, and it started asking questions.
I'm on. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. So, can I make the motion then to waive the rules to consider the $6,000 expenditure on the invoices?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you, Councilman.
Any opposed? The waives have been ruled. Any further discussion on the invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved.
Erica Strasburger, I abstain. Thank you.
One abstention. I apologize, Councilwoman. I meant to slow down. That takes us to P-cards, meaning motion to approve the P-cards.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That moves us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. First, the first paper is Bill 104.
Bill 104, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director or Acting Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference, and Rail Pollution Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval to reconstruct the crossing of the North Avenue Brighton Bridge, Brighton Road Bridge docketed at the Public Utility Commission and from the Northside Leadership Conference at all versus the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Appeal in the Commonwealth Court.
Motion to hold for two weeks, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. That moves us to our new paper, Bill 304.
Bill 304, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement or use of existing agreements for the creation and installation of public art at Arsenal Park between the city and Sasha Residence. The total not to exceed cost is $17,000.
Approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Your chair.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I just want to say simply how excited everyone in Lawrenceville is to see this part of the project in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 305.
Bill 305, Resolution Amending Resolution 827, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter into an agreement with UPMC Work Partners Life Solutions for services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Employee Assistant Program by extending the existing contract for another year.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 306.
Bill 306, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Job Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network and Providing for the Authorization to Enter Into Agreements with Various Agencies and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support, Implement, and Administer the Program. Costs not to exceed $3,828,594.
$3 million. Motion to approve. Very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Thanks, Councilman. Director, are you with us? I did have an opportunity to speak with the director about the bill, but I would just like to give her the opportunity. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. I'm Deidre Cochran. I'm here for Director Manuel.
Thanks, Deidre.
I'm the senior manager.
Yeah, I'd just like to give you the opportunity to speak to the program, to the ERM program, if you'd like to.
Okay, and I also have Kayla Waller. Kayla, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm Kayla Loudon-Waller, the ERM supervisor.
Hi, Kayla. Welcome.
Okay, the ERM program is a program through the Department of Human Services, and we work with clients through the, who are on, who receive TANF, which is welfare, subwelfare to white, welfare-to-work type program. And we do job search. We have contractors, and we just help them to become employed. Last, before the program, before the pandemic, we served 255 city residents. During the pandemic, our enrollment went down because, you know, everybody was home. We only served 28 clients, but so far this year, we've served 99 clients. And our program year runs from July 1st through June 30th.
Okay, thank you. Kayla, just want to, thank you. Kayla, just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you had anything to add.
Yes, I would just like to add that, you know, with the COVID, well, we're in the yellow stage, or it's not as prevalent as it was before. Our referred, because we are a referred program, so that means that the Department of Human Services refers them to our program. There has been an increase, which Deidre did state that there were 99, but there are a lot of people coming off of what they consider good cause, meaning they gave them time to stay at home because of COVID. Well, those restrictions are being lifted, and now we are receiving, I want to say maybe five to 10 referrals each week. So, the program is extremely beneficial. We help a lot of people become self-sufficient, and, you know, it's just something that's good, and it helps the City of Pittsburgh as well.
So, just one quick question I have, if you could help me to understand. I believe the legislation speaks for the application for grants, but at the same time, we have an expenditure of $3 million plus. Can you just help me work through that?
Well, when it says a grant, we are actually, the City of Pittsburgh is giving a grant, and our grant is for $2,828,594. So, that money covers all of our expenses for the clients. It covers staff salaries. That's just the grant that's given to the city for us to pay our staff and to administer the program.
Appreciate it.
So, our program doesn't actually cost the city any money. The state is actually providing the funding for the program.
That's what I was trying to get at without really knowing how to ask the question. So, I appreciate, thank you for being here, and I'm happy to support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate Mr. Kraus asking the question so we could learn more about this wonderful program. And I'm curious, you may not know the answer to this question, but do the TANF recipients that are being referred to us, do you have the sense that childcare is a barrier for any of the referrals?
Well, at this time, it's sort of a barrier, only because depending on the daycare provider that they choose, if the ratio, that means, you know, if people are working, because, you know, there's a ratio involved with childcare. So, if there's not enough space, that can be a barrier. The blessing is, now that we have all this remote things going on, we've been able to, even though the clients, they can do their job search remotely, we can do, you know, there's all different types of Zooms for job readiness. There's a new program called Skill Up, where they can get all their skills and build on the resume and things of that nature. So, because we are still working kind of on a hybrid schedule, and that's permitted by the Department of Human Services, childcare is not as huge of an issue. But once we're back to normal, that kind of goes away because people are employed. You know, the daycares, they have the staff that they need to offset the ratio of children that are coming. Has it been a barrier, and can it be? Absolutely. We're just hoping that that doesn't become a problem. And, you know, they're automatically, they have, they get childcare right off the back. So, there's no waiting period. It's not like if they're a working parent, well, I have to join a waiting list to get that. They're automatically eligible for that service. So, as long as they're doing something to work towards becoming self-sufficient, finding employment or a career, they will have that childcare. So, that's not typically in a normal basis, for lack of better words. That's not typically a problem.
Okay, great. Maybe we can follow up afterwards, if you have time. We want to make sure that, you know, we don't have barriers in a way for participants. I have the sense that a lot of the recipients also have, you know, these are for families, right? So, most of these are households with children in them.
Absolutely. In order to come to the program, you have to have children. And we have a lot of different resources and to play to help them with those barriers. We do a lot of different things. So, yeah, a conversation can absolutely be had if needed.
Thank you. Council has worked on trying to also allocate funding to make sure that we have, we are supporting childcare businesses, both as economic development and community development. But we know they're not always located in the neighborhoods where there's demands, right? And there's not always childcare. We hear of a high enough quality in neighborhoods where there's a demand, right? So, there may be low-cost childcare, but it might not, it might be low-quality childcare.
Right.
So, we have the $2 million pot that we allocated years ago that is being administered through what used to be PC, and it's now Trying Together, to try to improve and invest in city childcare facilities, even at home, childcare providers. And then also, the council allocated $250,000 right before COVID in 2019, and the URA was able to get, thank you to the URA for their kind of microfinance skill sets and hired up people to also target city-based childcare facilities, especially in the neighborhoods of need. That was leveraged with another $1.5 million from PNC. So, there's nearly $4 million kind of along the street. But if it's, I'd like to get a sense of kind of where it just been some of these programs are coming from to make sure we're not mismatching targeting in a way, or see if we can just make a connection.
Okay. Okay, and Councilwoman Gross, we can also do a map. I mean, not a map, but we can do a, like, do a search and say, okay, what zip codes do most clients live in? Where zip codes are most of the childcare providers? So, we can definitely get you that data also.
Fantastic. That's fantastic. We'll look forward to that conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I had some questions.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to Deidre and Kayla. I wanted to ask just about the process. So, you said DHS sends individuals over to the ERM program?
Correct.
Yes.
What would be an example? Like what? Like, how do they, how do they come in contact with the individual?
Okay, so anyone who needs cash assistance, you have to go to the Department of Human Services to apply for that. So, if you, if you wanted just food stamps or child, well, not even childcare, just food stamps or medical, you are not, you're not required to attend a program. But anyone who needs cash assistance has to come to a program. Whether you choose city or county, you have to be attached to a program in order to get that cash benefit, not your food stamps, not your medical. So, you walk through the Department of Human Services, you do your interview. I need to receive, you know, I would like cash assistance. They tell them the next step of that is, okay, where would you like to go for your job search? Because the ultimate goal is for you, it's called temporary needy, not for you to stay on that forever. So, they're going to give you this cash assistance, but you have to attend a program to try to find yourself a job and/or career. Once you do that, they ask them, where would you like to attend? The city ERM or county ERM? They decide where they would like to go at that moment. The case, county caseworkers, they refer them through, via paperwork. They send us the application. We enroll that person. Once we get in contact with them, they start our program immediately after the first initial contact, or however long that may take. But in order for you to receive any type of cash benefit, you have to attend an ERM program. You cannot receive cash unless you have something which they call good cause, meaning a sick child, you're sick, you know, anything that is a barrier that is beyond their control. They'll give you a allotted amount of time to handle that barrier. But ultimately, in order for you to receive that cash assistance, you have to be attached to an ERM program. So, that's why we really need it. Because as long as there are people there that need cash assistance, they're not just giving you that cash assistance anymore like they did years ago. You have to find employment.
Thank you. If they're referred to a county, to a county ERM program, what Mm-hmm. Thank you. If they're referred to a county, uh, to a county EARN program, what, what does that look like? Does the county run that or?
The county runs that, yes.
Okay. Um, and then once they, they come over to the city's EARN pro, they choose the city's EARN program. Um, and then we help them with, uh, employment advancement retention. So that means that we're literally similar to like a career link where then starting the process for, okay, what are your qualifications? What can you apply for?
Yeah, so depending on their, you know, a lot of people come kind of already prepared, but may have came a, you know, in a bad situation, and we can use COVID as an example, you may have worked and, you know, life shows up and you need cash assistance. So, you know, we meet you where you're at. If you need, if you're, you know, you need your resume built, we, we assist with that. Your childcare, we assist with finding the proper care for your child. We help with all of the barriers along the way to try to take away those so that when you do find this job, this career, there aren't any barriers for you to come back into the program as far as receiving cash assistance. So we do whatever we need to do. We have all different type of things in place for them to kind of eliminate the barriers and to become self-sufficient. And prayerfully, we don't see you again for some time until maybe you, you fall on more times.
Mm-hmm. What, what are like the, the top two job, um, you know, um, uh, categories of?
I'd say healthcare and customer service. And that could be a range of, you know, um...
What type of cut, what, what type of healthcare?
Customer service is pretty broad, but right now, medical, you know, working inside the hospitals, environmental services, that's top right now. And customer service, anywhere from a cashier to a manager, those are like the top two right now.
What do they do inside the hospital?
Environmental services, we have people who actually are qualified to be, you know, I'm not just CNAs, but nurses assistants. We've seen all types of walks of life. It's not just people who are just sitting at home, but have built up a career and may have lost it for whatever reason. So there's, yeah, environmental services is one of our huge ones, dietary, things of that nature.
Hmm. Are you seeing that housing is any bear, a barrier for people in the program? Like, do they have housing?
Yeah, once they get here, that's kind of not an issue. Because when you, if you go to the Department of Human Service and you request cash assistance, that's one of the things, you have to have a good address, for lack of better words. So let's say you may be in a homeless situation. They will set you up and then they'll send you here and then we use things like the United Way, two-on-one, to try to help them overcome that barrier. But for the most part, that is not a huge barrier. We haven't been there right now, but that has been in the past. But we have, um, you know, we hook you up with a shelter, connect you with different things of that nature. And we have a lot of success with those who have had that, who have overcome that barrier by using the resources that we provide them through the EARN program.
So someone who is in a shelter situation where they're experiencing homelessness could come through the program. Um, but you said that's a, just a few, because they are, because the county already, uh, tries to fix that barrier.
Yeah, they, they initially try to help them out initially before they even do that, because they have to have a good address. Even if you move from the, if you move places and you don't allow, you don't let them know, that can close your cash assistance. So they try to do whatever they can prior to referring them here. And they know the success that we've had with helping, so it's okay if they pass that on because we work the best that we can to make sure that we can help our people.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for walking me through this. I really appreciate, um, you laying that all out. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There any further?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Coghill.
Yes, sir.
Um, hello, Deidre and Kayla.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. It's, it's nice to hear about this program. I, I really wasn't that familiar with it. How many years has this program been in place?
Um, I'll answer that, Kayla. Um, this has been in place since, I want to say nineteen eighty-eight.
Wow, okay.
Cause I actually worked, um, in a different county. I'm from Washington County and I did this back in the eighties.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, you know, I saw the, the amount, it's grant money, three million eight hundred thousand. Is that all grant money or does the city put in?
No, it's all grant money.
All grant money.
The city puts nothing in.
Great.
We actually, um, contribute to the city. We pay, uh, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to the city each year just for us to be city employees and just for any expenses that the city may incur with us being employed. And we pay, um, yeah, the city pays nothing for us.
Great. And, you know, it sounds like you have a wide scale of things that you provide. Um, obviously, job training, resume building. Uh, I heard Councilwoman Gross talk about childcare. Um, so how long a list of things do we actually provide as to, you know, people who come to us besides those three?
Uh, we don't actually provide the childcare. Uh, the wealth, the county assistance office provides the childcare. We do, um, the job seeker services, uh, the resumes, the soft skills. Um, and we do like a paid work experience and we provide those type of services. But the childcare is actually provided through, um, the Department of Human Services.
I see. And city residents only, obviously, right?
Well, now it's, um, client-driven, so the client can live in the city and attend the county and vice versa.
Hmm, I see.
It's up to them where they would like to go. Depending on where they live, they're able to make that decision if they would like to be on the city side or the county side.
And I, I take it there's a long list of people who have gone through the program, who we consider successful and employed?
Oh, yes. And as Deidre stated, it's been, you know, well over a couple decades. So there's a tremendous amount of success in that, yes.
Okay, listen, that's great. Um, yeah, thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you.
That takes us to our last committee of the day, which is Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one supplemental paper, Bill three forty-two.
Bill three forty-two, resolution further amending Resolution forty-two as amended by Resolution six sixty-five to revise and increase the City of Pittsburgh's portion of the contract from three hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cent to three hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cent for the four twelve Boulevard of the Allies office build out. During the final phase of design, it was determined that there were layout changes needed by the user departments as well as structural drawings and calculations to be resolved before construction documents could be completed. These services were not included in the original scope of work and once added will increase the overall contract by a not to exceed additional fee of thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thanks, Councilwoman.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. Councilwoman Smith opposed.
Good morning, Madam President.
And Councilman O'Connor opposed.
So two in opposition. So affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Um, that exhausts our agenda for today. We do have a, a number of meeting announcements. Excuse me. This afternoon at one thirty, council will hold interviews for directorships of the Departments of Public Works, Mobility and Infrastructure and Parks and Recreation, as well as interviews for members appointed to the Equipment Leasing Authority. Next, we'll due to the primary election, council will hold both our regular and city committee meetings on Monday, May sixteenth at ten AM and one thirty PM respectively. Speaker registration will close May sixteenth at nine AM and twelve thirty PM. On Tuesday, May seventeenth at one thirty PM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill two thirty-five relative to the historic designation of the Rodeo Shalom. Registration closes at twelve PM on May seventeenth. Next Thursday, May nineteenth at one PM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill two seventy relative to accessory short-term rentals. Registration will close at eleven thirty AM, May nineteenth. And also Thursday, May nineteenth at six PM, at the Pride Project Incorporated at two-two-seven Bondview Street, council will hold an in-person only public hearing on the city's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. And registration closes at three PM, May nineteenth. Is there anything else from members?
Councilman, I just want to add, just, um, we've gotten twenty-one applications for Kate's position. And so I talked to Councilman Kraus yesterday and he's going to lead the process. Um, it's the HR, uh, chairperson. I thought that'd be a great, um, project. And so he's going to lead the process, working with all council members. And then we're going to make the decision between council leaders after the members send the recommendations to us. I just want the people to know that that's the process for what I'm following.
Thank you, Madam President. Is there anything else from members? If not, made a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.